It is five thirty and I'd like to call this meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Avery? Is not here. Commissioner Fluehling?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any public comment to the committee? Public comments going twice? Public comments three times? Public comments are closed. I don't believe we have any communications?
No.
Um, no old business. New business resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-one, forty-nine. Approval of a request by Genesee County's Metropolitan Planning Commission to transfer unspent CDBG funding at the amount of ten thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars from blight elimination to senior center operations.
I'll move it with a couple of questions.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Questions?
Alright.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bradshaw, if you'd approach. You and I had a brief conversation about this over the phone and I did look through the background material. I just want to make sure I understand it fully. So we had some community development block grant dollars assigned to, that may not be the right word, but Flushing Township and they were going to do some blight elimination projects. They have decided they can't use it or, you know, don't want to use it for that purpose. They're interested in transferring it into the Senior Center Operations Fund. Where, where does that fund sit? At the county level? Senior Center Operations? Or is this to the Senior Center Operations at the Flushing Senior Center?
Correct. It's to the Senior Center Operations at the Flushing Senior Center.
Got it. Okay. Cause it just says Senior Center Operations. I don't know anywhere, does it actually say the Flushing Senior Center in any of the materials? I don't know that it does.
Um, I know in the backup documentation, it has the, what the funds are going to be used for. That's where it's going to say it. So it's.
Okay. Alright. Well, I'm, I'm all for giving more money to the Flushing Senior Center, especially since it's in my area. What are eligible expenses for under, under operations?
Right. So the transfer today to the Senior Center Operations, and that's a CDBG category, Senior Center Operations. They outlined in the attachments, there's a budget where they're going to be using those funds. I'll kind of paraphrase it a bit, but they've detailed out probably about nine or ten different activities. Anything from paying for some of the cost of the audit, paying for, I think there was some cleaning. Mostly just operational. They identified two staff people that were going to be paying some of their costs. Not the director, just some of the staff people. But yeah, each one, I think there's about nine or ten items on there that they.
They were current staff members then? Part of their salaries?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to have to look further for that because I started reading through it and I didn't see the page you're referring to, but it's in here.
Yes. If, if you click on there, it's, it outlines about nine or ten different.
Okay. That's very helpful. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions? Discussion? Alright. Um, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We don't have any other business before the committee and we are adjourned at nine thirty-three, I mean, five thirty-three P M.
I call the Finance Committee to order at, you said what time?
Uh, five thirty-three.
Five thirty-four.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuzna?
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger?
Present.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
I need approval of the minutes from September third, twenty twenty-five.
Move it. Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. And we now take time for public comment to the committee. Is there anybody that wishes to address the committee at this point in time? Is there anybody? Third time and final time. Nobody? Thank you. We close public comment. Communications. We have Crystal Simpson, our CFO, coming to give us a update on the defined contribution board.
Evening.
Good evening.
I'm coming before you tonight to discuss developing a defined contribution plan board. This is related to the Nationwide Plan. So it's for those who don't qualify for the G-Source defined benefit. Um, we have the amounts that are set aside monthly through, or I'm sorry, bi-monthly through payroll into the Nationwide account for the participants. Uh, there is a Retirement System Act three fourteen that defines our fiduciary responsibilities for those funds. My office has been carrying out those duties, but there's no formalized documentation of decisions that are made or the review of the investments that are held in that plan that we do annually. Uh, we look at the expenses that are being paid by the fund. VMT Law, we consult with them for legal things related to this plan, has recommended that we develop a formal board. Again, this will adopt policies through that board. It will also have board minutes that will document the decisions that we are making. Um, and that will help protect the county in the event that we get FOIA requests or anybody accusing us of not making the best decisions for the participants overall. Uh, we would have that formally documented, the decisions that we went through, how we made those decisions throughout the year and provide that information. Uh, VMT Law did recommend that myself, my deputy finance officer and the retirement services administrator be part of that board since we're already doing all of those activities and we're very familiar with the plan. Um, but obviously that decision is entirely up to all of you. Um, so we just wanted to start that conversation, see if you're interested in doing that to protect the county and what next steps you'd like us to take to determine who should sit on that board.
Is there any other organization like through the state that can handle that? Where we just give them the money and then they would report to us, you know, once a year, twice a year, or whatever?
So the plan document through Nationwide, um, right now says that the county itself is the administrator and then by way of the funds funneling through my office, I'm handling those fiduciary duties. Um, but under that Investment Act, we are allowed to have the county board delegate that to a separate board. Again, to formally document the procedures that we're doing. So it would have to be something either at the count, like your level or a board that you decide to appoint to handle those activities. It would have to be something done here at the county.
Okay. Would have to definitely be in-house then.
Yes.
And you're just looking for direction in the near future?
Yes. This is just, I wasn't sharing with Josh. I'm like, do you want it on an agenda? Do you want to start with a communication item? So he said, let's put it on there, talk to the board and then decide how you all would like to proceed forward. I'm confident that we're doing the right things. I just think it would be in our best interest to do the board to doc, formally document it. So if we're, you know, subpoenaed or FOIA'd, that we have, we have all of that information memorialized if you will.
Would you need, uh, county commissioners on that board like you, there is on the other retirement funds?
No. So this, this would be in a little different. The VMT Law said it can just be, you know, myself, my deputy finance officer and the retirement administrator. If that's what you'd want to do so that you don't have to be in, you know, involved at the commissioner level, you could do that. You know, we could always periodically report to you, you know, um, as, as the commissioners, we could report to you, you know, what's going on with that or the minutes or whatever information you'd like to see. Or, you know, commissioners would like to be involved, they would also be allowed to be part of that appointed board.
Yeah. Well, I don't have a problem with basically leaving it as it is with the three of you doing that, just making it official. But I don't know. What do my other, uh, board members think? Anybody have a comment?
Question. Uh, how many people fall under the defined contribution? Yes?
It would be anyone hired after I believe March of two thousand and eleven. So right now we only have, I think about sixty people that are active that are still eligible for the defined benefit plan. So all other employees, which right now we have about thirteen hundred. Those who are full-time and eligible would be part of this Nationwide Plan. It does also have assets for people who have left the county, but left their money within that Nationwide Plan. Um, so it could be a lot higher than just that thirteen hundred.
And if I hear you right, um, it sounds like you think we should have more than just the three of you on this board or not necessarily?
No, that was the recommendation. Um, again, because we're the three that have been involved, you know, and, you know, we meet with the investment professionals once a year. We go through the portfolio. We have discussions about, um, the expenses that are being paid on the portfolio that we do have. So the fact that we're very familiar with that, that was the recommendation, but, you know, you could decide to appoint any, anyone you'd like to participate in that board. Or you can just keep it at the county level and continue as we are if, if that's also what you prefer.
Mr. Lloyd?
Thank you, Crystal. Um, so I appreciate you bringing this to us and, um, and, um, kind of making this official. I, as one member of the commission, I'd like to see a commissioner on that board as we have on the other boards. Um, because this, uh, this defined contribution plan impacts a lot of our employees and it, um, it'll not just allow representation from the county commission on that board because it is an actual formal board, but it'll also have a member on our board also to bring things back to us if necessary. I know you all will be presenting out, but I think having a member of the commission on there would make it consistent with the other, um, the other boards that we have and we do have representation there. I think on a couple of them, it may be two commissioners. So, um, total confidence in the work you all are doing, but if we're formalizing it, uh, I think it makes sense to be consistent with the others and have representation. Uh, here's a question. Beyond the three of you and if this body agrees to, um, have members of the commission a part of it, is there a possibility for others being on it from like other employee groups? Like, I can't recall like the makeup of the other groups, but I know it's like folks from the unions and stuff like that, especially when you start talking about pensions.
It's not that you can't. I mean, you could decide however you want it to be made up. You could decide the composition of, of the people you'd like to be involved.
It's supposed to make up, excuse me, I'm sorry. No, no, you go ahead. I'm sorry.
Um, if, if you wanted some union representation, you could always do that too. Just whatever you think would be most beneficial.
And, and I just threw that out as an example. I'm not, I'm not suggesting we have union representation or not. I'm, I'm trying to recall in my mind and I'm drawing a blank on the other, uh, boards that we have that you also sit on, like the makeup. What's the diversity of some of those makeups?
Yeah. So the G-Source Board is a multi-employer plan for the defined benefits. So we do have, um, representation across all the employers. VIBA, we have different representation throughout the county. Those two plans though are a little different because they involve county expenses that are paid. This is entirely, the Nationwide plan is entirely participant money. It's not our county money. Um, it's all the participants or those who have moved on and still want their investments held there. Um, so we're not making decisions on how to spend money, um, you know, or things like that that we do with G-Source and VIBA. It's more of making sure that we, we didn't just set it at the beginning of this pension plan and just let it ride itself out. We should be looking at the portfolio, um, you know, if expenses are riding high in one of those, um, mixes within our portfolio, we'll make a decision to move to something similar that has a lower cost. So, um, unlike those other two boards, we're not making decisions that affect costs for the county itself, but we are looking to make sure that we're doing the right things to protect the funds of those people involved. So if, if you think that that would be best to have a participant or someone else on that board, you could also do that as well.
And then one additional question. Would you name other than yourself the other two positions that are on that as a part of that, that Trinity? That you just, that group you just talked about? Is you and?
That was recommended myself, my deputy finance officer, and then the retirement services administrator. And she's the one that sits in on the G-Source and VIBA meetings. Um, but her and, uh, her assistant Sierra are the ones that sign people up for this, get them registered, um, start the initiation to get the amounts withheld from their paycheck to get into that pension plan. Um, so they're very familiar with the requirements and they help people get onboarded as they come in the door.
Okay. Last question. Um, I'm curious, would it be a benefit to having, um, someone who handles the benefits? Cause they're interacting with employees. Like, I don't know if it'd be somebody out of, um, the Anita's department, somebody who's interacting with employees as relates to their benefits. Cause that is a, well, it's a contribution, but it's something that's communicated to them as something that they have the benefit of doing or contributing to.
Yes. So the, the Nationwide piece is handled entirely by the retirement office because it's just something handled through the payroll submission. And there's just that, um, you know, based on years of service you vest and what you can receive when you leave the county. Um, but there's nothing that HR is still involved in. They handle, you know, for those who are on this defined contribution pension plan but are still eligible for retiree healthcare, they would handle that piece of it, but that's through the VIBA trust, not this Nationwide plan.
Alright. Thank, thank you. Closing comment. I appreciate the clarification about, uh, this not including money that's coming from the county. So that, uh, kind of changes my position in terms of having, uh, a county commissioner there. I could go either way, but I'm, I'm fine with you.
The funds are sent there by the county, but we, once they're there, they're the participants' money. We don't get to decide how those funds are spent. That's up to the, entirely up to the participant. Um, once they vest, they can take that money and put it somewhere else. They can leave it there and just earn earnings on it over time. Um, it's entirely up to participant how to drive those funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Not to put you on the spot or anything, but if you were to make up this board, what, who would you put on it?
Um, I definitely think the three of us that were suggested make sense because we're the ones dealing with it on a regular basis. Um, I'm not opposed, you know, even if I was, it wouldn't matter, but to a commissioner joining us if they are interested and would like to see how the process works, um, or even a participant, if they want to look at all of that with us and, you know, feel like we're doing our fiduciary duty to make those decisions, I think any of those, um, options would be, would be good for the plan.
Is there anybody else? Well, this is just communication, so it really doesn't require any action at this point in time. But, uh, maybe we can think about this for a little bit and thank you for bringing it to our attention and then maybe put it on the agenda for official action in the near future.
Okay.
To adopt your recommendations or something else.
Okay.
Thank you, Crystal. I don't think there's any old business, new business. Resolution twenty-five dash one nine two one, approval of a request by Genesee County's Drain Commissioner to pledge Genesee County's full faith and credit to issue six point four million in bonds for capital improvements in District Three. I need, in a support?
Support.
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. You want the money, Gary? That's your district, isn't it?
I love it. Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Bring it on.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five dash two one seven zero, approval of a request by Genesee County Sheriff Office to eliminate one corrections deputy position and create, post and fill one sergeant position. Move it. I need support? I'll support it with a question. We have anybody from the sheriff's department to come up and explain it? Well, we got sheriff.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's tough to fill positions. We have contract negotiations, you know, it's been a trying time for all of us. Uh, we have fifteen open positions just in the jail. And, uh, in the jail, we have thirty people that are on probation. And so the supervision is critical and key. So my request is to eliminate a deputy position, which we don't have filled, to have a supervisor that's now flexing between first, second, and third shift, even though we were twelves, to maintain order, to make sure that we are trained and we're responding to calls without increasing liability. It's a, uh, it's a logistic move for, uh, proper management leadership.
So being the, you have a lot of unfilled positions, this really won't affect your budget, whether it's an increase or a decrease or whatever?
No, sir. These are all, as you heard from, uh, your previous speaker, it's all the defined contribution. It's not a DB plan. We, uh, we're going to keep it in our budget. The only difference between as a deputy and a sergeant is less than five thousand. When you look at the pay rate and the budget, the benefits are virtually the same. So we worked with fiscal service to make sure it's an even swap, but we do have fifteen positions that I'm trying to fill on a regular basis.
Does anybody else have any questions of the chair?
Or additions?
Yeah. There is actually a budget amendment attached. Um, it will increase general fund expenses by just, just under thirty-nine thousand. The thought is, I think as they were heading forward with this was, there may be some savings from vacancies and helping to reduce overtime that may help offset that, but we won't know about that until later in the fiscal year for twenty-six.
Yeah. Mr. Shoemaker, you have a question?
Well, that was one of them she brought up because I, I was trying to figure out, there's, there's some difference in wages obviously there, so. But you think this will help eliminate some overtime then? Is that worth thinking though? So that's where the cost saving is going to come?
Not only that, those unfunded positions. I mean, this is a work in progress. You know, we report, you know, Q one, Q two, three and four. So we work with fiscal services to make sure, even if overtime's high, at the end, does it impact the overall budget that you approved? And the answer, if it is yes, we fix that so we don't have to come and ask for more. So yes, although it's a general fund, we work hand in hand. And again, it's a walk of miles, see them all in this. So the answer to your question is yes, those sergeants will work overtime, but we need to fill critical positions so it doesn't open us up for liability.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no. Just, just, just a comment. Uh, I'm hearing like, um, you're kind of hearing in different spaces across the state particularly, that there's challenges with getting folks to go into law enforcement careers. But also particularly to go into jails. Vocationally, we receive calls from people all of the time looking for alternative employment. Um, and some of which have worked in like, say like the Wayne County Jail and have quit because it's just not desirable for people. So I understand the, the need to kind of make some adjustments to make sure you have the coverage. I guess my question to Crystal is with the unfunded positions, so at some point we'll be coming to, um, the, um, excuse me, with the unfunded positions. So ultimately, they won't be able to go over their budget without something coming to us anyway. Is that correct?
Right. So monthly, we run an analysis, which is what he's referring to, and we provide that to the board office. And we identify any, um, departments that are trending to be over at that point, based on the number of payrolls that are left. Um, so we do look at theirs in total across salaries and wages, their overtime, all of their fringes. We, we roll that up to see how they're doing for the year. So yes, if they were going to be over, then they would come back and ask you for more money.
Okay. Alright. I support it. I'm good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one seven three, forward to rece, forward to receive and file a copy of the third quarter FY twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five investment report.
Move it.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one eighty-eight, approval of a request by Genesee County's Drain Commissioner to pledge Genesee County's full faith and credit to issue thirty-five million in bonds for capital improvements in the Ragno Treatment Plant Service Area.
Move it.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one eight nine, approval of a request by Genesee County's Drain Commissioner to pledge Genesee County's full faith and credit to refinance eighty million dollars in bonds to take advantage of lower interest rates. It is estimated the refinance will save thirty million over the next twenty years.
Support.
Do I need a motion? Okay. Motion and support. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one nine eight, forwarding to receive and file a copy of Form eight fifty-eight forty for closing governmental unit report of real property foreclosure sales for twenty twenty-three foreclosure sales. Is there any comments or discuss, dis, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five twenty-two fifty-four, forwarding to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the weeks ending eight twenty-four, twenty-five, eight thirty-one, twenty-five, in a total amount of eight million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. Is there any discussion or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two six five, approval of a purchase order to Aramac for the per, for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-six and amount not to exceed nine hundred and twenty-five thousand to provide for annual food and commissary services to the inmates housed at Genesee County's jail. The cost of this purchase order was paid from the following account.
Support. Move it.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? I just have one. Is this the same amount as last year or, uh, increase? You can shout it out. I understand. Thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash two-two six seven, approval of a purchase orders for various vendors for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-six and amount not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars to provide for medical supplies to Genesee County's Health Department. The cost of this purchase order is paid from accounts. Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five twenty-two seven one, approval of purchase orders to various vendors for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-six and amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to provide for drugs and pharmaceutical prod, products at Genesee County's Health Department. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the following accounts.
Move it. Support.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five two-two seven four, approval of a purchase order to Bond Tree Medical for the fi, fiscal year ending twenty twenty-six and amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-two thousand to provide for the purchase of medical supplies at Genesee County's Office of the Sheriff. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the following accounts.
Move it.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-five two-two-seven-five, approval to create post and fill one public health coordinator position at Gency County's Health Department.
Move it.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-five dash two-two-seven-six, approval of a purchase order to Gordon's Food Service for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-six, an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and twelve cents to provide food, service, products, and supplies for Gency County's Nutrition Services. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the following accounts.
Support.
I just have a question, is this, this is grant funded through the Health Department?
Good evening Commissioners, Pamela Coleman, Director for G Card. No, sir, that's a C nutrition program.
Okay.
Although the-
If I would've listened to Dale quicker, I could've saved you a trip up here, cuz he whispered to me, but thanks Pam.
Yes, sir.
Have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm assuming it's been bitted out, is that the way this works, how does this work?
With Gordon, sir, i- is a cooperative.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-five two-two-seven-eight, approval of proposed budget amendment to the twenty-four, twenty-five appropriations resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment.
Move it.
Support. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-five two-two-seven-nine, approval of a purchase order to Abbott Laboratories for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-six, an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars to provide for the purchase of insure for the Gency County's Nutrition Services. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the counts listed.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-five two-two-eight-zero, approval of purchase order to US Foods for the fiscal year ending in twenty-twenty-six, an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents to provide for the purchase of food and supplies for Gency County's Nutrition Services. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the following accounts.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Approval of a purchase order to Bob Barker for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-six, in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars to provide janitorial and related supplies along with inmate, inmate clothing at the Gency County's jail. The cost of this is paid from the following account. Any comments or questions?
Come on down.
This is a retirement-
You talking to the Sheriff or what?
Bob's retirement program or what?
Okay.
Price is right.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-five two-two-eight-three, approval of a purchase order to Bunsey Distribution Incorporated for the fiscal year ending in twenty-twenty-six, an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand to provide for janitor- janitorial and related supplies to be used within the Gency County Jail. Cost of this purchase order is paid from the following.
Move it.
Support, is there any comments or discuss- questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-five two-two-eight-seven, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars to provide support for emerging health threats impacting Gency County. The budget of this grant is attached.
Move it.
Support.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-five two-two-eight-nine, approval of purchase order to Vitacor Health Strategies LLC for the fis- physical, I don't know what you well, fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-six, an amount not to exceed five million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents to provide healthcare services to the inmates housed in the Gency County Jail.
Move it with questions.
The cost of this is paid from the following account. I'll support it, go ahead Mr. Schumacher.
Mr. Sheriff, what was the, what did we pay for this service last year, do we, do we have a number on that?
Could we have Crystal or somebody from the jail?
This was a different company last year, and I don't know what the, the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget was for ACH, but this is a brand new company. I know that it came before this committee on RFP, I could get that answer for you, what last year's were, but we were within, obviously, your approval to get this company, and that is the total year cost that we're getting that PO approved for.
You can probably get that number between now and next week, correct?
Probably now and tomorrow by ten o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
If I may continue, thank you.
Please.
Were there other bids, the company we were using before?
Yes, sir, we went through the whole RFP process with purchasing. ACH was one of the bidders, but Vitacor was the one selected, and they were implemented about ninety days ago.
Well, I just, he just said something that just caught my radar.
Yeah, continue.
So, we put the new company in, but we didn't approve the contract already?
Contract is approved, it's just the PO to pay expenses. Okay. I don't know, Mr. Freeman, can, can you, in your history, when that contract was approved? I mean-
Yes, I have that. It was originally started in April of twenty-twenty-five, so they would've had approval for April through September already for twenty-twenty-five. Now they're asking for approval for fiscal year twenty-six with the amount that was approved when you, you looked at the bid that you selected, or that the committee selected and brought to the Commissioners. So this is what was in that RFP packet that was submitted for the vendor that was selected for next fiscal year. I don't know how much was actually paid for fiscal year twenty-five, I can find that out and send it to-
Like, I'm just, I'm just one, I'm glad to see the process, I'm glad to see some change. I mean, I'm hoping the care, I'm assuming that's part of the reason probably why this choice was made, is for an increase in care.
Right, ACH was not fulfilling their commitment.
Yes, I, and so that's why, I was just, just trying to find, I'd like those numbers, just to see how much healthcare costs around, all over the board. We know what county employees increase is, we can see that number, but just this would also be nice to see as far as other people were responsible for what the cost of healthcare in the state and in the nation overall's increasing, just, so if you could give me just what the numbers and then the increase, or I can do the percentage myself, so, thank you.
Good question.
You know, now that brings up a question, when you bill for various services, are they under any contracts like what physicians and hospitals are with various vendors like Blue Cross where it's capped? Or do you, they just pay out of this what you bill?
So, I could go ahead and take a shot now.
I mean, is, is the services capped?
I wanna make sure I understand, so when, when they're billing us for payment, is it capped at this dollar amount, is that what your question is?
Maybe I can also-
Do, do, do you just give them this amount of money and then they provide the service no matter how much work they do?
Inside the jail. Transports out of the jail are different.
We, we make the payment invoiced monthly, so we don't give them the full amount upfront, we, we pay them monthly over the-
Right. But you never go over the end at the end, at, at the end of the year.
Correct, this is a, a not to exceed amount, I believe, from the RFP.
Okay, what if they don't use it all?
They, we only pay what they bill.
So if they don't bill the full amount, and I'm sure they probably will.
Well, they have to show services.
Yeah.
And the one-
Well, that's what I'm getting at, the services, see it in, in my business.
Right.
You know, I'm, uh, I'm under contracts, and in particular, the Medicare, but also Blue Cross and a lot of other insurance companies, and I can bill any dang thing I want, they're only gonna pay this.
Right. I can look and see, I don't know for sure if it's a fixed fee or if it's based on, you know, number of inmates, I can get that from the bid packet.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to know how that works.
But I do wanna add to, the variable that does change the price is medications. When we have somebody comes in that requires a, some kind of an oncology drug or HIV drug, those are always the highest amount, so that is the one variable that is uncontrollable based on the inmate population. But we track that, again, that's why we have people that, you know, are watching those line items, and should it start to get to the point where it's going beyond what's been budgeted, that's when we either make corrections, or we come before the Board, but so far, Vitacor has shown that they're on top of those charges, and we work, like I said, on a regular basis with fiscal.
Well, I'm not, I'm gonna vote yes on this movement forward, I just-
Oh yeah, it's good information to know, yes.
His question's got my mind whirling as to how it's built.
I do also know that Vital Care is providing more services than the previous provider was as well, so I can get that from the RFP as well, but that was part of the consideration when they were determining what carrier to go with.
In specific to, that is mental health care, psychiatric services, which is a majority of our population, so we, we transitioned to a new company that's providing greater services for the greater need of our inmate population.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Sheriff, is this group also doing the, the MAT programming in the jail, the medically assessed treatment, right?
Yes, MAT is exactly what you said, it's, it's required now that we do this, and that in conjunction with a lot of other organizations that come in to help with our addicted population to get them on a path of restoration, but MAT is, and again, those numbers are, are impressive, and people are seeing great results.
Okay, and then, I heard you say transportation outside the jail, so that causes me to realize that there are medical conditions probably so significant that you have to take an inmate to another provider, is that fair to say?
Yes, we have inmates that attempt suicide, they, they have, they jump off their, their beds and attempt to hurt themselves, have neck injuries, we have inmates that have seizure disorders, inmates that come in that, they overdose from a previous addiction, we narc at them and they go right to the hospital. Hurley is our, our hospital of, of primary care. There are also inmates that come in that have follow-up care, where female populations may need some prenatal care, we take them to appointments, kidney dialysis, all those are inmate dependent and hard to predict, but yes, we do transport.
Okay, and, and that makes perfect sense, Hurley is the primary hospital facility, do we ever take them to either Genesis or McLaren or another hospital, if Hurley's not, we don't?
Well, I said, specific to the need of that patient, but we use Hurley Hospital as our primary facility.
Okay, thank you Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Yes, anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you. I don't think we have any other business, and I now adjourn at six-ten.
Alright, I'm gonna call the Governmental Operations Committee to order at six-ten PM, roll call please.
Commissioner Wayhill?
I'm here.
Commissioner Schumacher?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Flueeling?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Here.
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum, approval of minutes, twenty-twenty-five dash two-three-two-nine for September third, twenty-twenty-five.
Move it.
Support.
Been moved and supported, is our discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Under Communications, we have a special presentation, which I mentioned, I think, last week or the week prior. I've been fortunate to sit in on many of the meetings that are held on Friday afternoons that Marlene organizes in chairs, but there's a great number of people in those, including Amy Delinkie, and Amy, if you would approach, she is responsible for technical assistance for the opioid settlement funds here in Michigan through the Michigan County Association, Association of Counties, and I've been in enough meetings where I know that she knows her stuff, and I know that we can always use some education on complex issues, especially the opioid settlement dollars. We have already allocated some of those, including at our last meeting for the specialty courts, lots of good discussion about it, lots of questions, and so I asked her to come from MAC to speak to us, she's gonna give us a presentation and then open the floor to questions for people who are on the committee, but also other Commissioners who wanna know more, so Amy, please take it away.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. So I'll keep the presentation brief, my role with the Michigan Association of Counties is to provide no-cost technical assistance to any county seeking support. I've been in this role for about two and a half years, and at this point, we've worked with about seventy-five of the eighty-three counties, and have been engaged with that Friday group that was mentioned earlier for some time now. So, in the presentation, we do have a list of some of the no-cost technical assistance that's available, but really this looks however counties want it to look, whether that's weekly engagement, one engagement presentations, administrative support, a wide range of different types of support that are available. We also host a local government learning community for township, cities, and county officials to learn about opioid settlements, to present to each other, and to hear from some external speakers, but that is a closed group to local officials if there is interest. We offer weekly office hours as well, and folks are able to ask us about allowable expenses, RFP development, facilitation of meetings, whatever supports are needed. So I'll jump into an overview about the settlements, so what we saw is in twenty-seventeen, there were so many, so many lawsuits against opioid manufacturers, distributors, retailers, that those were combined into multi-district litigation, which is where we see numerous companies really seeing large lawsuits around the country, or what we refer to as the national opioid settlements. In twenty-nineteen, the first of those was settled, and for local governments in Michigan, the first dollars that were seen were January thirty-first of twenty-three, so a little later than some other folks in Michigan, but local governments started receiving funds on that day. Many of the companies that are settling, they're paying over a different timeframe, so some are paying one year, some are paying over eighteen years, and they do not need to pay every single year, they can skip payments, just not consecutive payments, and the dollar amounts coming to the county with each of those payments differs just about every time. So for Gency County, between twenty-eighteen and twenty-twenty-two, we saw the, the leading overdose fatality rate in the state. This data is from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, also the fifth highest rate in non-fatal overdose emergency department visits from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two, which is the, the latest data on their dashboard, the state's dashboard for this data, and that is a rate for those time periods combined, so averaging those times. But I also provided here, there are many other local governments within the county that are receiving their own funds. So funds from the settlements start with the companies that are settling, go into an escrow account held with a company called Brown Greer, the National Administrator, and that National Administrator then directly distributes those funds to local governments who are participating. So, local funds never touch the state, and the other townships and cities within the county that are receiving funds, those are all direct to there, so when we talk about Gency County totals, those townships and city numbers are not included, so they're all distinct settlements. So what we're expecting to see in terms of dollars across the state is about one point six billion dollars. We do have sign-on for two new settlements, right now, the Purdue and Sackler settlement, as well as the generic manufacturer settlement, which encompasses eight different companies. Those dollars would bring this total to one point eight billion, but with what we have right now, the sign-on is not complete for those, so we don't have final, final determination on numbers for local governments yet. But right now, the county is expecting to see thirteen million dollars over that eighteen-year period, starting January of twenty-twenty-three. There will be additional funds coming from those two additional settlements, my records indicate that you've signed on to both of those already. So when we look at how these funds are to be spent, the national settlements are all distinct settlements, unless the companies are together, like in the generic manufacturer settlement, or the distributor settlement, so each company, it's a different legal agreement, and each of those have some different requirements, but all really encompass spending requirements around one thing, and that is a document called Exhibit E, a list of allowable uses. But I'll take a step back, so when a county signs on to a settlement, they are also signing a state subdivision agreement between the county government and the Michigan Attorney General's Office. So the Department of Attorney General and the local government council, or the attorneys representing approximately seventy percent of counties in Michigan, had determined a state subdivision agreement- um, had determined a state subdivision agreement that says that all funds are intended to be used for purposes of opioid remediation, uh, the legal definition I've provided in the presentation for you today, as well as seventy percent of those funds being used for, for future opioid remediation. So activities that have not yet taken place, not highlighting prevention, but activities that have not yet occurred. So it does allow the county a small amount of room for reimbursement. And then there are some nuances with each of the settlements as well. Uh, but that's kind of the general overview. So approximately eighty-five percent of funds must be spent on opioid settlement or opioid remediation purposes. So Exhibit E and the legal definition of opioid remediation, I just wanna point to a couple things. With the legal definition of opioid remediation, we do see the ability to address poly substance use. So folks that are using more than one substance, it doesn't just have to be opioids, as well as co-occurring conditions. So individuals who have both a substance use disorder as well as a mental health diagnosis, which allows us to be more flexible, uh, as we see that the drug overdose environment is constantly changing, and especially over that eighteen-year period will allow you all to be, um, a bit more responsive to local needs. And then when we dig into Exhibit E, this is a fifteen-page document, um, that I've provided a really high-level overview of. The focus for spending, the list of allowable uses, is really around prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery for substance use for opioids. Now, in this document, we, we see, uh, only a few ways to spend on things that are a bit different that we see in typical grants. So things like research, planning, and coordination, those would all be potentially allowable as opioid remediation. But the goal here of all of Exhibit E is to focus on those most profoundly impacted by the overdose crisis, to avoid items that are punitive or coercive in nature, and really focus on helping those that have been impacted the most. And then the last slide I've provided for you is, is just a common county process. So you're not legally tied to this process in any way, uh, but through the seventy-five counties that I've worked with over these last two and a half years, um, this is the most common process that I see for counties. So the first is the creation of a separate fund to keep those opioid settlement funds separate from the general fund, to make sure that all of those expenses and allocations align with the legal requirements of the national settlement documents and the state subdivision agreement. The next is stakeholder engagement. So typically, folks will engage those local experts in the field to make sure that local needs and local voices are represented, as well as folks that, um, work in prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery. From there, a steering committee is usually developed, a group that is not a decision-making body, but is created to provide recommendations to the board and priorities for spending of those funds. From that point, there is typically a needs assessment or some sort of data analysis that occurs, uh, landscape analysis, looking at existing services and funding throughout the county. And then a determination of priorities. So that data usually points to specific needs that the community has, and then being able to use tho- that information to inform a competitive bid process. So typically, an RFP is developed in most counties to, to assist with transparency and access to those funds. Then, then there is typically a subcommittee or a subgroup of that steering committee, uh, neutral parties who are not submitting bids, to review those proposals, and then make recommendations to the larger steering committee before making recommendations to the board. There are a lot of steps for monitoring and accountability, whether that's contract language on metrics and what grantees have to report back to the county. The county is responsible to report to the Michigan Department of Attorney General on an annual basis, starting in fiscal twenty-six, as well as to Brown Greer, the National Administrator, bi-annually on expenditures. Uh, different requirements for both of those reports, information that you would already have, uh, very simple information. But the county is still responsible, even if those funds are passed to another entity. Um, then we see websites created, public-facing documents to inform the community, since everyone has really been impacted by this crisis at this point in time. And then again, that reporting component that comes into play. Um, but happy to take any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Amy. Do, do members of the committee have questions? And then other commissioners? I see Commissioner.
I'm not on the committee.
Okay. Any committee members? And then we'll, Commissioner Brown, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you for coming and presenting this information. It's very valuable. Um, I see on, um, the Exhibit E, so prevention is the number one. Um, are you aware of what strategies have been documented or researched that are most effective at prevention?
So the way that Exhibit E is laid out is there are really three categories. There's core strategies, prevention, and treatment. Prevention encompasses harm reduction in that document, and treatment encompasses recovery in that document. But the way it's divided, that core strategy section would cover really those items that are best-practiced, evidence-based at the top in that core strategy section. Um, we see from national guidance as well, uh, a real focus on youth education prevention, um, by utilizing evidence-based curricula specifically, um, and doing other tools and interventions at that level. But a wide variety of evidence that, that we can share, um, about different activities that can take place in the prevention space.
Okay. I have two more questions, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Um, so on the ca- common county process, um, do, are you aware what stage we are in, in this flow chart?
So there's been a lot of stakeholder engagement at this point. Um, I'm pretty sure the steering committee, the formalization of a steering committee is the next step, um, for, for you all in that process.
Okay.
If I, if I might chime in on that question, and Marlene, maybe if you would approach as well. My sense is that, that, that is correct. And that's actually on this committee's agenda, and under Old Business is the steering committee. But I think we've also done data gathering. And so, um, maybe Marlene and Amy, you could speak to, um, how that's been done, and, and what stage we're in, and, and in terms of the data, how these commissioners, the Board of Commissioners, might get access to that eventually, and how that, um, in your view, feeds into sort of the determination of priorities.
Thank you. Uh, just for the record, Marlene Callick, Community Engagement and Justice Services. Amy, thank you. Great presentation. And nailed it, everybody. We are honestly at the flow of creating the steering team membership, which we'll bring back to you guys in the next few weeks, if you will. And then Michigan State University, through free technical assistance, through the State of Michigan Opioid Settlement Funds, have conducted our needs assessment here in the county and are ready to present that information to you guys. And so what was really beneficial with Commissioner Wayhill bringing Amy in beforehand is to obviously give the new commissioners that hadn't had a recast of what this information was a couple of years ago, before we go ahead and present that information to you. That MSU will come and present. Dr. Nature has been, uh, very willing to come. Some dates have been, uh, projected to Joshua, and we are ready to get those to you. And as that flow chart flows to the next spot, it would say data gathering, and then recommendations. And so that steering team will then take that recommendation that the community really identify what those core remediation, you know, suggestions are, and then create some strategies, so that we will be able to come and present those strategies to you. Again, prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and all those others.
Dr. Brown.
Um, well, I, my next question had to do i- if we were at the determination of priorities stage, and, but it sounds like we've done some data, some data gathering already. My question was gonna be, what are our priorities here in Genesee County? Has that been determined yet?
So, Dr. Brown, thank you very much for saying that. So initially, when we, we gathered as a cohort almost two years ago, we came to the Board of Commissioners with some core remediation strategies, and then were challenged by you guys to go out and find out what the community needed. And then we were graced with free services from Michigan Association Counties and MSU. And so for the last eighteen months, they have been in the community conducting those surveys with community members, persons with lived experiences, individuals that have lost loved ones, and then obviously administrative agencies. I don't wanna say that what we suggested a couple of years ago is done and over with, but times have changed, and we'll have to obviously gather what is drafted from MSU, and then go back into the strategic mode and identify what our next determination of priorities would be for our time here right now in the moment. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other questions? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you. Um, thank you for being here. It's appreciated. Um, see, I see that we're on this, we've been kinda neutral on this just a couple of years, so it's nice to see it moving forward. My question is this, is there a timeline these funds have to be spent?
No, there's no start date or end date for spending.
Okay.
Most folks really focus on having funds for the duration of the settlements. So many counties that I work with determine an average annual amount based on their expected total, in order to be able to fund programs sustainably over the duration of time that funds will be coming in.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, continue.
You may. Mr. Shoemaker.
Um, are there any communities actually investing these funds, and then you just using the proceeds, so it goes over a longer period of time, helping people for, you know, not just the, the amount of the time the funds are coming in, but they actually, for lo- for a longer period? So, you know, I, I, I'm, what I'm getting to is, last minute, I propose something. What I, what I would like to do is see these funds invested. We only spend what the investment is from there, and we keep seeing those funds return year after year after year, until, you know, I'm, I'm long gone. So is there another com- or county or municipality doing something like that?
We've had a lot of this discussion specifically. Um, we do have a lot of counties with their funds invested. Um, that is absolutely the case, and they are, um, bringing in that interest as, as time goes on. The consideration of only spending that interest really comes down to, does that meet the, the urgency of the overdose crisis that we're in? So for some counties, it may make sense. Uh, they may only be able to spend twenty thousand dollars a year annually anyway. Um, and so it may make sense for them to just get money out in order to make sure that they are able to fill gaps that are occurring, or be able to serve their community. Um, so it really comes down to, what is that dollar amount? And is that dollar amount for interest going to meet the community's needs and address the urgency of the overdose crisis?
If I, Mr. Shoemaker.
Thank you. Now, my understanding and things I've read, and I, I mean, you can read things all over the place, unfortunately, truth is not truth anymore, um, is the fact that the opioid, as far as crisis prescriptions, 'cause a lot of these doctors have realized this is gonna cost maybe my license, that, that we're gonna cut down on these, writing these scripts, that this is less. And now we're seeing more of a substance abuse issue starting in other areas when we do have, instead of coming from the doctor's office or from the pharmaceutical companies, other areas. Now, I understand these funds can be spent in those areas appropriately. So I'm just wondering, if you were investing at, let's say, thirteen million dollars, and you were even at a half a million dollars a year, let's just say you were, what, what more would you really need to spend on if you're focused on the opioid and a little more of that? You know, my goal is long-term prevention, 'cause the problem is, is we get them, we get these big funds, we think we're very wealthy at the time we have them, we spend them all, we move through them, and then there's no, um, solution to help people. And then the state changes funds, or the federal government changes its funds, and then we're standing there going, we don't have funds to take care of these programs. You know, I would like to see, and I'd like to talk with you further about it, but this as a stopgap for when we don't have those federal funds or those state funds change, that we can continue the service we had. And then if there's extra funds, we take them and we direct them to the areas we need. So I'm just wondering, is there anyone doing something like that, other than just investing and going, well, this is what we, 'cause we don't know what to do with it right now. We've invested it, and that's kinda where we are at this point. Is there a lot of that? Or is someone with a clear direction of what they wanna do with those funds, like what I'm proposing?
Most boards, that started with an idea of wanting to only use their investments after their stakeholder engagement realized that that would not fit the, their community's needs. Um, but there's no legal timeframe in which you have to spend the funds. Uh, but with the new state subdivision agreement, so with the Purdue and Sackler settlement sign-on, counties had to sign a new state subdivision agreement that, that basically condensed all the other ones into one, added the mandated annual reporting, allows counties to ask the state about their spending, if there are any additional questions or concerns, but also now allows local governments to ask the Attorney General's Office for generalized guidance. And this may be something that would be important to them, as they are the enforcement mechanism. And so when things come up like endowment or investing and spending, um, the interest, that may be something that the AG's office at some point decides to enforce, to say that's not the intention of the settlements. Um, so it may be a really good question to ask them before moving forward with the decision, now that that option is available to counties.
Thank you for that. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker, first and foremost, and for that. So I sit on the Opioid Solutions Leadership Network with the National Association of Counties, and counterpart in Kentucky, I believe, uh, had suggested this specifically, and I wrote it in my notes, so I can maintain it for us, is they have put aside so many million to gain interest for the continuity and longevity of maintaining or implementing any new programs in regards to substance use disorder as the emergent needs come about. And so it'll be some really good conversations to have here in the near future with our Attorney Generals on, as we're planning accordingly and doing things as such, if it's allowable or not allowable. And maybe it'll be allowable right here, but what I'm hearing you at this moment, that it could be changed five years from now, 'cause we would never know.
I mean, with, with an administration change, we don't really know what the focus of enforcement will be at that point. Um, the Emerging Needs Fund, we are working with counties to develop Emerging Needs Fund. We have two that have been established so far in the state. Um, really, the county choosing to set aside a bucket of money, um, to be able to replenish, but really with the intention of providing support for potentially a spike of overdoses in the area and supports that are needed during that immediate crisis, or addressing funding cuts and disruptions that, that may be occurring as well.
If I may, Commissioner.
Uh, this is more of a statement than a question, but for years, we've operated with what the state and federal government has given us to, up or down a little bit, but that's where you are. The goal, the goal of what I'm thinking of is just that, like I said, that long cer- long-term sustainability that can keep us across the boards from there. Because unfortunately, we've had the same amount of funds for, for a while now. We're, we're trying to meet those needs, but there's never gonna be enough to meet everything we need. But we can, in my opinion, secure the fact that we're gonna keep these programs going. And if there's any change, because as someone I know says, elections have consequences. Okay. And they do. And that means policies can be changed. You could have a different AG in there. You can have, at federal government level, we could have changes on these, or state level. Just depends what we should, choose to do and that people vote for. So, like I said, I, I wanna talk to you more about that. I'd like to talk about the Kentucky one also, because I, I think this is, in my opinion, the way to go. I, I think it's smart, because we haven't been cut yet, but just a little bit from the state and the federal. So we keep these going, and then we just, you know, it might not be all of it if everybody wants to keep it. I think it's definitely a conversation we need to have sooner or later. So I appreciate your input, and any more you would have on other counties, especially the state of Michigan that are doing something like this, or counties that might be interested. I'd love to have our team talk to them and, and maybe brainstorm of other ideas we could do. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Additional questions or discussion? Commissioner Getzinger.
Per your presentation, it looks like we've received o- over half of what we're going to receive. Is that already spent, or?
Absolutely not. We have, uh, seven million sitting in the bank currently, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. It was for, uh, Deputy Rice, deputy, that's specific to the jail coordination of the medicated assisted treatment program. That was just discussed a little bit previously. And then myself partially for observations, monitoring, and all of the such. And then I'm leveraged through our, uh, Community Corrections Grant.
And we also, last week, approved the money up to a certain amount for one year for specialty courts to come from the settlement funds, which is, uh, an eligible expense under Exhibit E, as I understand it.
Well, and that, that's why I was curious. We're not even to determination of priorities, yet we're already spending the money. It seems like the.
Due to emergency facts, right? So they were for the emergency. So for jail MAT, it was specific, because the sheriff's office was granted an ARSAT grant. They're the Michigan State Police, and that just came about last fiscal year. And so it worked out magically. Unfortunately, obviously, the, the health insurance processes at the jail had changed, and Vital Core is a great asset. They have great longevity across the nation with jail MAT. And so it seamlessly approached at that time a manner. And then there was emergence. And then for, for myself, I was doing the work for almost a year and a half, not charging opioid settlement funds at all. And they were in the bank, increasing their interest and all, and just coming a hundred percent out of Community Corrections. And it was only fair, so that Community Corrections didn't come and sidebar us here at the county, for me to be accounted properly within the accounts to, to, to match the duties being conducted. for me to be accounted properly within the accounts to, to, to match the duties being conducted.
Commissioner Winfrey.
How are you defining opioid remediation?
So the legal definition is, um, provided on the slide about spending requirements. And so this is from the national settlement documents. This is not a Michigan definition. Let's see. Sorry, near the back. So care, treatment and other programs and expenditures, including reimbursement for past such programs or expenditures, except where this agreement, meaning the, um, settlement agreement, restricts the use of funds solely for future opioid remediation designed to, one, address the misuse and abuse of opioid products, two, treat or mitigate opioid use or related disorders, or three, mitigate other alleged effects of, including on those injured as a result of the opioid epidemic.
So this doesn't cover any drugs that are not opium-based?
So the last part here, mitigate other alleged effects of, including on those injured as a result of the opioid epidemic. Um, so other effects would be other polysubstance use and co-occurring conditions. So it can expand to other substances or those that are using substances and have a mental health condition.
Do we have additional questions or discussion? Commissioner Kuzina?
Just a old guy comment. Uh, when this opioid, uh, legal process started, uh, a number of years ago, I was on the board and the attorneys that were handling the class action, they came to, I don't know. Marlene, maybe you can correct me, either first or one of the first counties to sign on to that. And, uh, the commissioners at the time had the foresight to do that. And, uh, if it hadn't been for that, uh, a lot of what we're discussing now, uh, would never have happened. So I got to give a lot of credit to some of the former commissioners that were here, uh, a number of years ago. But we have been very fortunate and we got a national expert, Marlene. And, uh, very well, you know, received by us anyway. But, uh, she is an expert and, uh, we rely on her heavily. And, uh, she's done a wonderful job for us. Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you, Commissioner, but Corporation Counsel is on point every time. And when I go to identify whether or not they've already spoken about any new settlements coming aboard, they're like, Marlene, we're on it and we're already in communication. So, uh, definitely we have a great Corporation Counsel here.
Well, then be on their heels.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for all that you've shared. Just, uh, um, one highlight of what you shared, the thought of, um, kind of rationing or portioning these resources, allocating them in such a way that we continue to have resources over the, the eighteen-year period. I think it's something that we should get more thought to. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Marlene.
In closing, I'd like to say that multi-jurisdiction hugging is, is wanted. And so our city of Flint, myself and Greater Flint Health Coalition have been in communication for the last couple of weeks. And, uh, I am very proactive in sharing this information, what MSU results are going to be after the Board of Commissioners have heard it from them first so that we can work together on a plan of action for building whatever programs is decided by the steering team. And so I, 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 again, I, um, I, I, nobody is trying to spend millions of dollars at once. And it's really to begin some proper programming. At the moment in time that we need it for individuals in the community, we have some major hotspots. Genesee County unfortunately sits very high on an overdose rate for our state. And, uh, it is, it is our, uh, it's, it's, it's just our requirement to, uh, assist the processes in this community. And I, I'm honestly excited to get that process started a little bit.
Do we have additional, uh, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, through you too, Ms. Marlene. So is that the steering committee who's going to put together, is it a plan for the steering committee to ultimately put together a plan, like each year we want to do these kind of prevention efforts and these kind of so on and so forth and be able to like create a budget for those resources? I mean, what?
So in my mind's eye, I see it the same. The two items that are funded currently, again, the jail, you know, Deputy Rice Coordinator, and then this upcoming fiscal year for specialty courts would be annually looked at. If funds are solicited from specialty courts to fill that gap that is needed for us to fill this fiscal year, it will be applauded and said, great job. And then those funds will not, not continue in 2027. Um, same thing for obviously the deputy coordinator. And then new items will, will always have a timeline to each agreement so that we can go identify if items are still needed at that time, if there's change in phases. Currently, meth is a huge increase in our community and for individuals. And so targeting speci- specific items at specific times is just the needed place. So to answer your question quickly, yeah.
Because in the, Mr. Chair, e- e- um, even in addition to staffing or like those positions, like really thinking about what are those, and I'm sure you'll be thinking about them, you all do that. But what are those, what are those things that can be done that can have like some kind of outwork, especially around prevention, some big splash, some big impact?
Oh, I get excited when you say that. So in, in my dream world, I would love to have in, in street outreach people in the community hitting our hotspots, walking up to people in the community, giving them a care bag, letting them know what we, what services we truly have in the community, because really people just don't know. And if we just make that engagement with a person and meet them where they're at, we're able to do those items, offering any clean needles to individuals so it doesn't affect the social determinant of health for the future. Those are the items that we're talking about. And let's talk about prevention for a minute, going into our schools and educating our young, right? Abstinence is a thing, but education is more important and tooling up our humans with all the necessary items. And, and again, Commissioner Chair, you indicated it at our last committee meeting that I was at, that your organization hosted stuff for children and sharing what Narcan has, had episodes and training them. And I, I have a teenager that's a senior and I tool her up with Narcan and she has it in her car and she knows about all those items. And to me, that is, that's a huge item that would be a core remediation strategy for our community, for the longevity for our community.
Thank you.
Do we have additional discussion or questions?
Just one other question.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Yeah. Back a few years ago, there was an organization called Connection that actually did prevention in these schools. Do we have anything similar to that?
Connections is still around, Commissioner Winfrey, and we utilize their services. And honestly, G C P C, you know, Lisa was here with the Genesee County Prevention Coalition, Health Coalition, nobody wants to take over the services that are being conducted. We may need to expand the services and utilize the vendors. That's why it was so imperative for us to, to begin to, to clean our processes here in this county because some of those vendors are on our advisory council. And so to have that steering team created allows us to remove the total conflict of interests so that when we go to create a proper remediation plan or present it to you guys, there is no hiccups within that.
Do we have additional discussion or questions? Uh, Mr. Freeman.
Um, Marlene has been on me now for a couple of weeks. MSU, uh, has finished their needs assessment and needs to present to you guys. So you also need to be thinking about when do you want to receive that? Whether you want to do it at a committee like this or workshop or session? So just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Um, I've got a, I don't know if these are questions. I might phrase this as a, as what I see and then correct me if I'm wrong. How's that? So to, I'm li- thinking about what Commissioner Getzinger said. A lot of money, a lot of money in the bank, very little, relatively little has been spent. We've heard what it's being spent on. It only gets spent when we approve it, a majority of, of this body. Um, so what we're trying to do is be more intentional and more planful, if that's a word, about going forward so that we, you know, there's going to be ad hoc requests, I think, for emergency situations like the specialty courts. Funding's going to get cut. They didn't want to end their programming or diminish their programming. But the intention behind, and I'm going to hold up, this is the steering committee framework that is under old business. And of course, this process mentions the steering committee. The purpose of that is for us to adopt it so that we have a structure of people that we then select, eventually for the steering committee that we vote on. Then they look at the analysis from MSU and other data sets. Uh, they come up with the R F P process so that internal departments of the county or internal divisions like the specialty courts or nonprofits like Connection or Wellness or some of these others that are on the group already, the informal, relatively informal group, can then put in four dollars to address the things under, uh, section E, what is it called?
Exhibit E.
Exhibit E, um, that are eligible so we don't get in trouble with the Michigan Attorney General. And then those recommendations come to this body after the R F P for us to deliberate and think about our priorities and how much we want to give out. And then we vote on those things and we may approve some, but not others depending on our pleasure at the moment. Did I get any of that wrong?
Not at all.
I'm going to come work for you, Amy. Um, so there you have it. I think that's sort of the, the thirty thousand-foot view. And, um, let me just say immensely grateful for you, for you, Marlene, and your leadership. And Amy, it's been a pleasure getting to know you through, uh, what is it, teams? Our team meetings, but seeing you for the first time in person. Uh, just to put a point in it, Michigan Association of Counties is providing all of the technical assistance through you for all the things on your list for free because you all have grants from nationwide funders who have an interest in, in making sure this happens correctly. And so any commissioner here can call you at any time or email you at any time. Join the learning community that you mentioned, uh, to learn more.
Absolutely.
And you'd be happy to come back if we need you.
Anytime.
All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
All right, uh, we're going to move on. Oh, you know what? I skipped public comment. Thank you, Mr. Freeman, for letting me know that I did that. Let us return to public comment. Uh, do we have any for the governmental operations committee? Going once, going twice, public comment is closed. We do have some old business, uh, resolution 2025 dash two one four four, approval of a request to create the opioid settlement steering team committee.
Moved and support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? I did have Mr. Freeman print out, at least for the committee, is it for everyone or just the committee?
The whole board.
The whole board. You have it in front of you if you have any, um, points to make on that. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm reading the members of this, you know, um, we've got three members here under section three organizational, organization A membership. I'm wondering how we just ended up on tho- those three groups? And there wasn't something from law enforcement in there? And because my, my, part of my problem is this. I have a family member who had suffered from addiction and he was a young man, even young in high school. And he could, I asked him, where did you get this? He said, Uncle Sean, it's so darn easy. You have no idea. I just make, I just text a number and guess what? It shows up in my locker. And, and this is, this is not in a school district that you go, oh, this would be common, okay? It is though. And I, I want, I want to have some representation from that side also. You know, and that's why I'm wondering, but you don't want four because then you have, the problem is, guess what? Then you have two-two and you're stuck on something maybe sometime. So I don't know how to balance that out, but I would like to see something with someone with some prevent, prevent. When I say prevention, I mean prevention aside from stopping these things from hitting the streets, stopping these things from getting out there because unfortunately, most young people, especially young men, consequence in their brain doesn't fully develop until they're in their twenties, late twenties. Some of us even into our fifties, but you know, the fact is, is, um, it, it is, it is something that's majorly important to me. You know, later on now, he's moved past these things. He said, just, the part of the problem was it was when you're struggling, it was just so easily obtained. And, and I want to make sure we're doing stuff like that. I love the in-school programs and stuff like that, but I also want to treat people well. And, and I am afraid of when different policies come and go, that we will lose these funds and what we will take care of and what we have. So I, I just don't know what to do to try to add that, um, on there or who, how you would do that and maybe me.
I wonder if we might have, Corporation Counsel has reviewed this. And I'm, I am, to Commissioner Shoemaker's point, a little confused because it's supposed to have seven members. Am I right, Ben? But then we only identify three that are from specific areas. Does that mean the other four can come from any of the others listed?
You know, as I'm, as I'm looking at this now, I don't think this is the latest, uh, version. And my understanding is that this is not an indication that there's only going to be three members, but that it, and, and that was one of the things that I pointed out. There, there's, there's bylaws that talk about eleven to fifteen and this talks about seven. And we, I thought we had corrected that to say, so both documents would reflect eleven to fifteen members. And I think one of the clarifications that I, that I felt like I added was when it came to membership, it was more not, these are going to be the only three members, but of the overall board, say, there are eleven people, at least one of them will have experience or expertise in substance use disorder. And at least one of them will be from the Genesee County Board of Commissioners and at least one of them, uh, will have expertise in behavioral health. So it's not, I don't believe it's intended to, uh, be an explanation of the full membership. But I think it's a determination that we want at least those three, uh, areas represented on the board. Because I think that it, it contemplates having folks like you've mentioned, Commissioner, people who have had the experience. But I think at a core, they want to make sure they have those three areas represented. But, but it, certainly they want more members than that.
Commissioner Shoemaker, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, like, one, I'd like to see the correct one. I don't, I don't want to pull this up, but I don't want to vote on something I don't have the correct language on. So I don't know if we could just bring it, the correct one next meeting, not vote on this one, but if the board's fine with just bringing it to the next meeting, but under, um, under just board, uh, instead of under deals committee, just bring it under, uh, general board business. You know, just to keep it going. But I, I am concerned with that. I would, I, I also, the appointment is going to be made by this board, as far as what I'm reading here. Has that changed at all?
Not that, no, not that I'm aware of.
Is it going to go through the process of the appointment committee Charles and I sit on then? Is that what's, is the process? I just want to clarify before we make decisions on this.
That would seem to make logical sense, but off the top of my head, I can't tell you, you know, based on what I, what I, what I saw. But I think that's at the board's discretion. I, I, I think, I don't think this contemplates trying to take that authority away. But honestly, that's not a question that I'm prepared to answer based on my review.
If it, it would be okay with the board. I'd like to just have this under general business next week with the correct, um, language and everything else like that and we can just move forward with it if that's all right with everyone. Because I.
I'm not on this committee, but I'm in agreement.
Is this on the agenda right now? Just regard my like ignorance. I just got back from the conference.
Yeah, it's under old business, but.
Yeah, for our last committee meeting, it was tabled and, and Corporation Counsel and myself, we went through, we edited all the documents. Our advisory council at this moment in time is specifically looking at those edited documents. And then I will resubmit all those documents when it's time to bring it forth to the committee. I would, I would definitely not sidebar you guys like that. So I did not submit the new documents yet. So I'm standing here like deer headlight, like what is going on? I thought Amy was just coming to present today.
We, we postponed it, which is different than tabling. So it was postponed to, from the last government ops to this because we weren't ready to take it up. And there were some issues that Corporation Counsel had seen where there were discrepancies in the number of people, at the very least, and maybe some other issues. My recommendation would be that we drop it for the moment and wait until a new recommended, uh, version of the language comes forward. Sooner rather than later, uh, because we want to get this process going. But that would be what I would suggest.
And at that time, I would love to suggest the ti- the individuals that have been at least solicited at this point. And if there are any other suggestions that you guys have of members you would like me to invite to the steering team, please email me personally. We are still looking for members. And so I, I definitely want to make sure that I not give that. And if Commissioner Shoemaker, you are eligible and available, we'd, we'd love that.
I, I would love to. I just want to make sure that when we're appointing these committees, we've been very deliberate. There's, this is another one that if we don't appoint them, we have two committees that the board does not appoint the members to. This one, if we're going to let people make recommendations, just put on who they want and then the D E I commission. Charles and I have been working on that because we believe everything should come in front of this board. And we should advertise it, promote it so we get the best people we possibly can, you know, on there. And then this board, this body can make a decision. So, but this is another one that I would like to see that we are making those decisions to make this happen, to make sure we're getting people that we feel are balanced in what we're looking for as a board. Um, also, it follows the same policy consistently and we show that consistency as a. Also, it follows the same policy consistently, and we show that consistency as a board for this appointment. So I'd like to see the language in here, Ben, if possible, that it's gonna, these appointments can be made by the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Mr. Vice Chair, so the way this reads, it, the appointments will come to this board, the board, Board of Commissioners, Genesee County Board. Because when I read it and it say board, I read some things above it to see where, what board was defined of. Was it that board or our board? Where that board is reflected there, so we do make the appointments.
Well, just to clarify, though, so, so we know, when you formed the committee, the people sitting on the committee were not voted on. She, she, this young lady who's always been very helpful was in charge, but it's not. So the people you have on there, just so you know, aren't appointed by this board. That's where my confusion is.
But they're not on the board yet because you haven't appointed them yet.
Yeah, so, so the rest of, that's, so, moving forward, because you have, what, three, three people that meet now or four?
Oh, well, the people that meet currently are just the Advisory Committee. And that's anybody, that's that stakeholder basis. As for steering team, there's nobody. We have some suggestions to offer to the Board of Commissioners that have been invited to possibly sit on that committee, but that committee isn't in existence yet. And so until that committee becomes approved by you guys to be in existence, then we would go ahead and give those suggested members that we have invited at this moment, whether or not they would be appointed by our Board of Commissioners, you guys, as steering team members. So nobody sits on that steering team at all right now.
Okay.
Mr. Shoemaker.
Understand the hierarchy. It goes Board of Commissioners, it'll go Steering Committee, and then Advisory.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Cleared up a lot. Thank you very much. So we, do you want me to put a motion to?
Was there, well, let me ask, who made the motion to pass it and then who was the support? Are you willing to?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my support.
And then I think we, without objection, will drop this item from the agenda and look forward to a revised proposal. And I do think it, Corporation Council, if you and Marlene would consider how the Appointments Committee structure that we have might tie into this as you're looking at a new version, I think that that would be helpful.
I mean, right now, it does say appointments to the committee are made by the board.
Yep, I get that.
But you're, you want to make sure. It's committee.
I'm asking you to analyze whether it makes sense along the lines of Commissioner Shoemaker's initial inquiry to tie it into the Appointments process that we use for many other things. It may not, but I'd like you to think about that as you create the new draft.
Okay.
Is that fair?
For the sake of consistency, that we do all appointments the same way.
Yes.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Sho, uh, Kuzno, sorry.
See, it's not just.
I had that conversation just earlier, how people keep getting the two of us mixed up. And I don't know how, but they do. You know, in reference to what Mr. Winfrey just said, I think that, you know, I, this does reference that the Board of Commissioners makes the appointments, but we need a policy that says that the Board of Commissioners makes all appointments to all committees and do that separately so that that's not a problem anymore. My two cents.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Great.
Commissioner Lloyd.
So, so before we draft a committee, so our bylaw speaks to different appointments being made by different people, persons, the board, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I just want to make sure, I just want to be clear. If a resolution is drafted, if it's all, it's all, which I don't support changing what our bylaws already say. But as it relates to like these different commissions, if you will, like this is an example, DEI, which we've had some conversation about, that we don't have people outside of the Board of Commissioners making those appointments, like body appointments, if you will, like DEI is doing it now, not to pick on them, that those come to me. That's something that I, as one vote, I do support. And, and this already says board. I know we're gonna see how that fits in. DEI, I know that's one that we need to take some action on to make that adjustment if that's the will of the body. So I just want to make sure as we talk about all appointments, we're talking about variant appointments. And if you say all appointments, then you're also talking about our bylaws and how that lays out what's appointment, appointed, and who makes appointments as well.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. So where we landed with this is we're dropping it without objection. The Corporation Council and Marlene with her new type, not her new title, but the new department name and her current title are gonna get together, and at least for this, they're gonna tie it to the Appointments process that we have through the Appointments Committee. All right. Under, also under Old Business, we have Resolution twenty, yes.
I'd like to move to drop item number one and item number three, Resolution 2025-2171, as well as Resolution 2025-225.
Support.
So move to drop from the agenda, 2171 and 2225? Is that what your motion was? And supported. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Shoemaker?
I'm, I'm in favor, so I think we need to work on these a little more.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Under New Business, Resolution 2025-1261, approval of a grant award from the Michigan, from the state of Michigan to provide for the 2025 remonumentation efforts by Genesee County Surveyor. The budget for this grant is attached.
Move it.
It's been moved, is there support? Moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2195, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Right of Passage Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $630,000 to provide day treatment programming and an evening learning center program at the Genesee County Juvenile Justice Center. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Move it. Support.
It's been moved, is moved and supported, is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
I'd like to hear more about this. I mean, I know we have Mount Morris School System come in for some education stuff. I'm trying to remember what we pay Mount Morris Schools, but I don't think it's that much.
It's in here.
Is it in here?
It's in all the other items.
If, if you would state your name and identify yourself where you're from?
Thank you. Sam Olson, the Juvenile and Probate Court Administrator. Good evening.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Can you explain this, that what the day treatment pro, program is compared to, you know, what the schools doing? Mount Morris Schools is gonna do? And compared to what the evening learning is compared to what the schools, so we know. A meeting ago, one of my colleagues from the third district mentioned that, guess what? He thought there were some overlapping things, and I want to make sure we're not overlapping on.
Yeah, sure. Well, the Evening Learning Center is a specialized program for the youth who are involved as, or court-involved youth, I should say, who are scored as medium and high risk. And so the Evening Learning Center is a, a, a program from three o'clock, you know, after school, if you will. Three o'clock to nine PM, kind of the high-risk time where, where kids might otherwise, you know, find themselves in doing some bad things. It's more focused on clinical treatment, community-based services, arts, a number of different, you know, curriculum associated with, not necessarily classroom work per se, but community development. And essentially try to give them structure, services, programs, trades, things of that nature that are kind of extracurricular in a sense. So it's, it complements our quote-unquote classroom functions that, that Mount Morris would, would provide.
As far as day treatment, it's the same thing, then? They're providing like more of a skilled type of learning during the day for those kids who are not doing the school curriculum?
Correct. That's, that's a great way of summarizing it.
How do we, how do we determine which child needs the school and which child needs the, you know, better place, skill, skilled learning?
Well, it's a good, it's a good question. So the juvenile justice paradigm, if you will, starts with the, the courts are, conduct a, a, an assessment of every youth, called like a YLSS assessment. That dictates the course of treatment, if you will, for a given youth. So there's low-risk youth, and so studies, and this is followed by legislation dictates that yo, low-risk youth really shouldn't even be involved in the system, the system being the juvenile court system. So those are diverted before they really get involved in, you know, maybe a formal charge or probation or things like that, that nature. The medium to high-risk scoring generally dictates a different path for them. And studies have suggested that more medium risk and high youth, high-risk youth should be geared toward more curricular activities, involvement, structure, things of that nature. And it's all dictated by studies from the University of Cincinnati and similar institutions. So the way the courts would address a youth today is dramatically different than it would have by ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. So these, this particular program is geared toward the folks that, or the young men and women who might otherwise years ago found themselves in secured attention, residential treatment in Nebraska or Pennsylvania or something like that. So it's geared toward keeping the kids in the community, but again, giving the attention and the services and the therapy they need based on what their susceptibility is for screening, if that makes sense. So these kids that would find themselves in the, or the Evening Learning Center, again, would be ones that would otherwise probably find themselves in a secure setting, which of course is, is not, doesn't dictate good outcomes for, for you.
If I may continue. I'm sorry, I find this fascinating because if we don't handle this correctly, we're gonna see them then just down the street years later. So here, here's my question, though. What do we do then to educate these kids so they're competent once they leave? So they, okay, so they've learned these skills somewhat, but they still need a diploma. You know, if they want it, college should never be a thing that they should think in their head they can't acquire at that age. So if they don't have that diploma and they don't have those things, what, what do we do to help them get there? Do they still do the schoolwork also? Do they, or how do we, how do we get them caught up? Because, because obviously, a lot of these young people, I guarantee you, have some reading issues and some other stuff that they, that, if they don't get it from us or help from us, they could have all the skills they want, but they're never gonna get anywhere because reading is so vital and so, you know, the studies all state that a child that can read is so much farther ahead than, sorry about that.
Oh, yeah. No, no problem.
I think I knew that song. I'm just kidding. Um, yep, there it is. Anyways, I, I just want to make sure, like I said, I've been on this, when you come up several times, and I just, I'd like to know that we're giving the best to these young people. I mean, a lot of it, what's happened, yes, they made those choices as a teen or someone that's younger, but it's also the situation they were put in that's created this for them.
Absolutely.
So it's our, our duty to make sure they're getting the right education coming out of there. So that's why I'm asking all these questions and.
No, no, no.
And I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to know, what do we do? Can you tell me, if you don't know today, I'm okay with that, but what do we do to make sure then they have that degree when they, the college dipl, or the high school diploma when they leave the school or they can read, you know, or proficient if they're, if they're going to the other program? I know they're higher risk.
Right.
Because they're a little more issues, to put it politely. So I just, what do we do? Is there a program for that while they're doing this program also?
So the rights of passage, if, if they engage, and there certainly are a number of youth who maybe aren't in traditional schooling, but they will connect them with GED completion programs. And the ones that are, happen to be in schooling, you know, at their own, you know, school or what have you. You know, they go to the learning center and, and learn those schools to augment their education. So there's GED completion, you know, regiments, there's college planning. Really, whatever the youth wants or desires, et cetera, these types of folks, these service providers will, will gear that path for them. So I can't say with a level of particularity about, you know, youth A versus youth B, but I'd be happy to, to give you some specifics with the academic programs, whether it be in their own school setting, whether it be GED advanced programming, things like that. I'd be happy to provide that to you.
I would like to, I would like to see that. And if I could, just one other thing, Mr. Chair. Is there information that we have, and I'm sure we do, about that once an individual leaves the juvenile justice system, whether they end up at the county level back in jail, if they offend again? Do we have numbers on that, what our success rate is?
Recidivism is, is definitely tracked. Now, whether they, now whether they can be extracted to like the jail programming and things like that, I don't know. But I'd be happy to get that for you as well.
If we could find out, I'd like to see where we are and then a metrics of maybe where other communities are on that to see. Because that's how we can measure success of whether we're doing this right, and maybe we should make some changes.
Certainly.
I just have one last one. Was there any of the company that bid this out?
Uh, this, this was year two
Yep.
of a proceeding, of a proceeding contract, so. I, I don't believe it was bid out last year. I can't say with particularity, but.
You, you had me up till that, you know, you really did.
I understand. No, I understand.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Was this firm selected through an RFP process?
Uh, I, I don't know if it was selected through an RFP. It might have been the only provider of such a service. This is year two, like it's.
Are there no local firms that provide the same service?
Well, they're, they're, I believe they're a national entity that we, they have a local, obviously a Michigan-based entity here that we contract with.
When, when does their contract expire?
This would be year two. Of course, the, the first contract was last year, and then be three additional years extensions if, if, if agreed upon.
So it rolls over or do you rebid it or?
Well, it doesn't roll. Well, we're just operating in the same contract, so I'm here today to ask for an extension of the agreement.
It's very similar to others. Yeah, so usually when we enter these contracts initially, it's for, you know, the initial full year and then X number of extensions. Each one of those extensions has to come to you. I'm not sure on this one if it was three years total or one year and three years. I can get that information for you, but usually there's more than one year before it's rebid.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have additional discussion? So, so we're not sure if it was a sole source issue?
I don't believe it was a sole source. Again, the, that's for the genesis of the, the arrangement from.
Okay, maybe for next week, we could get that from Purchasing or from you. Looks like he's coming up.
Good evening. Derek Jones, Purchasing Administrator. So what happens with this particular contract is that you as a board approve the Child Care Fund. And in that specific, if you look at the actual items, this particular contract is listed. So you approve that, and that's what happened with, in the, Sam's predecessor. So she, she had it all in the Child Care Fund. So when you approve that budget, this particular vendor is part of that specific budget. And so the contract was initially signed for one year with three one-year extensions. So you voted on the Child Care Fund this year, which included the vendor as well. So that's how we have this particular vendor.
Yeah, I, I guess I should have started with that, but this is, this is one of the many components of the annual Child Care Fund. So thank you, thank you, Derek, for that. So this, this board approved the, the annual plan and budget a little over a month ago, I believe. And so this is the battery of services we have for juveniles who are either, you know, child protective setting or, or delinquency. So this board approved the budget. We are now engaging the contractual component and furtherance of that budget.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
I have one, I promise, one last question, maybe. How many kids are you gonna serve with this? How many kids do we serve for $630,000?
The, the scope, uh, capacity is twenty kids in the community setting and twenty in the intensive eating learning center. So it'd be forty at any given time. Now, that again is over, that's just, that could roll, of course. That's, that's the capacity for the two programs. But this is, again, this is under the community-based day treatment component. And so the contract is $630,000, seventy-five percent of which is borne by the state of Michigan. And the county bears the other twenty-five percent. So it's reimbursement.
I understand, but still tax, still taxpayer.
Oh, I, look, I agree with you. I'm, I'm with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Do we have additional discussion? We do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is carried. We have one, one, a. Resolution 2025-2196, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Mount Morris Consolidated Schools in the amount of $266,785 to provide for two school resource officers. Revenue from this contract will be deposited into the account listed.
Move it.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2212, approval of a grant award from the Office of Highway Safety Planning In the amount of six hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars for the purpose of funding the Genesee County Secondary Road Patrol. A copy of the budget is attached.
But. Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I had a resident actually talk to me about this. What, what technically classifies, you know, as a state or a secondary road? Obviously, the county, we have main through line county roads. Just what would qualifies that and where are main?
So, this doesn't cover M roads or interstates. Everything else is considered the secondary road.
Is this something that, like example, you know, we have a lot of residents saying they're not getting coverage in the out county. Is this something that hits the out county?
It does. Yes, it's countywide.
Is there, is there a way we track this to see where the? You know, after it's done, where they're patrolling, we could kinda let these out counties know? Like, if, example, I have a couple far out county, just, you know, areas that think they don't get any love. And it'd be great if we could show them, guess what, we have these patrols, this often, everything else. Like, I know Marty has a few areas that would like to see a little more.
Where, where they're patrolling is, has to be reported to, uh, the MSP that manages this every, every quarter. Um, so they keep track of their dailies, they keep track of their miles, they keep track of their hours, and that gets reported to the state on a quarterly basis.
If, if he could, I'd love, I'd love to see that just as something to show support that we are, there are additional things being done in the out county for that. I know we, we serve, you know, like Fenton Township has Sheriff's Department, I know Vienna Township does, but there's some other ones that. Don't have that and would like to see some funds returned. So, if you could get us that and, I mean, maybe it's just me. Marty, I don't know if you'd wanna see it.
No, I was gonna say something that's.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, thank you. Maybe a misconception that a lot of communities have in the, the county, thinking that they have. Coverage by the Genesee County Sheriff's Department and they, they really don't unless they contract, as what Mr. Shoemaker said. And then there's some communities that have their own police department and then there's some that just, they don't have anything. And I guess what I'm leading up to is I live in one that doesn't have anything. And they, I'm constantly reminded, they think they're covered. And I says, no, you're not. You only get this road patrol. And then I know that the, uh, paramedics are out patrolling too. But if you have a area that is going through a crime spree, do you shift some of that over to that area? Or you continue just dividing it up equally around the county? I mean, how are you deciding where to, to send these road patrols?
So, we use analytics, we use staffy matrix, we use statistics from nine-one-one and CAD to determine like hotspot areas. And just so we're clear that, that these particular people that are assigned to this grant, they don't answer nine-one-one calls. They are specifically patrolling secondary road patrols. They can respond to accidents, they can respond to vehicle fatalities. They can respond to like speeding. Uh, this last little bit, we followed school buses around because we've gotten complaints that. People were bypassing, uh, school buses when they were trying to let kids off. So, um, people are assigned to this, went behind school buses. To let people know that, um, that it's not acceptable and that you'll be out here and we'll handle our, the business appropriately.
That surprises me a little bit that they don't answer nine-one-one calls.
It's a precaution of the grant. Now, they can respond as backup, but they can't be the primary officer on a, on a scene like that.
Okay, cause there's some communities that need to know that.
It's a great question.
But yeah, I appreciate you including me in that conversation.
Do we have additional discussion? For the record, it was Captain Kenimer that came to the mic. That's okay. How's the grandbaby?
Oh, it's wonderful. It's the best thing ever.
Good. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two two three five, approval of an agreement between Genesee County. And Meridian Land Surveying in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand, two hundred fifty dollars to provide for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six remonumentation program. The cost of this agreement is fully grant-funded and will be paid from the account listed.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move five through eight considering they're the same.
Support with a question.
Resolution.
So, we have moved five through eight. There's a motion and support. Commissioner Fluehling.
So, I'm assuming, somebody here, Ken?
Yeah. Thank you. Drew you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. I'm assuming there's four of them because of the scope of the project is so large. It needs four different vendors to complete it?
We've used, we've used three in the past, I think, but I think the timing, it, it allows, divide the work up a little bit easier. Cause we're kinda starting later in the year than we normally do.
Okay. Yeah, cause I see there's. Two of them are the same, same dollar amount and then you've got a forty-three thousand and thirty-one thousand. I was assuming that it was just because of the, the scope and the number of monuments that you have to find, that one company can't handle all of them.
Uh, pretty much. The, the two smaller ones are new this year, so we're kinda testing them out a little bit, make sure they, you know, don't give them. Too much work in case they don't do a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, do we have additional discussion? So, the motion is number five through number eight. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two two four zero, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Lake Fenton Community Schools. In the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars to provide one school resource officer. The term of this agreement is October one. Twenty twenty-five through June twelfth, twenty twenty-six. Revenue from this contract will be deposited into the account listed. It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just like to make a statement. I, my, my children attend Lake Fenton schools and their friends and our family are. Very appreciative of our school resource officer. If you have children in these schools, show a little love. They, they are wonderful. They don't just. Stand around looking like they're gonna discipline the children. They're actually involved in their lives. Um, they actually come, sit down, have lunch with them. And my kids will engage with them. Um, that, your kids' games, they're doing so many things. It's, it's really kind of, uh. I guess it sets them in a different light with our children, especially in my district and my, and my kids and their friends. So, I, I really like, love this program and I know other schools have it, but I can just speak to my school where my kids are and my school resource officers and I don't wanna. Say names out loud to somebody, you know, somebody looking into them, but our school resource officer is fantastic out there, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two two four two, approval of a contract between. Genesee County and Hurley Medical Center in the amount of seven hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred eleven dollars to provide police services. The term of this agreement is October one, twenty twenty-five through September thirty, twenty twenty-six. Revenue from this contract will be deposited into the account listed. It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried. We have resolution twenty twenty-five dash two two four three, approval of a contract between Genesee County, Atlas Township and the Goodrich School Board. In the amount of one million, seventy-four thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars to provide for police services, including school resource officers. The term of this agreement is October one, twenty twenty-five through September thirty, twenty twenty-six. Revenue from this contract will be deposited into the accounts listed. It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in fa- uh, Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, I don't sit on this committee, but I, I did have a question, uh, you know, probably with the Sheriff's Department. This one is a little bit different than most of them I know. Atlas Township, uh. Contracts with the Sheriff's Department for their services and then the Goodrich School Board under the same contract. Is being provided this research, cause usually most school districts do that separately. You know, why is this all combined? Just, you know, at the top of my mind, it just looks different than all the other one.
Captain Kenimer from the Sheriff's Office. Is for the pleasure of the township. It worked better between working with the school district to keep it on the cycle with their, uh. Their police service contract. And they committed to the terms of the, of the police service contract. A lot of these SROs are year to year. Uh, and this one, I believe, oh, this one's a year to year too. Uh, it's based on their pleasure. They wanted to work together with the township board.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted an explanation.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two two eight eight, approval of an agreement between Genesee County. And Philip H. Bouvet III Professional Corporation in an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. For the coordination and delivery of weekday arraignments, misdemeanors and other legal services for the term of October first, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
I'm moving.
It's been moved? Is there support? It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two two nine zero, approval of an agreement between Genesee County. And Kevin L. Rush in an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand dollars for the coordination and delivery of weekend arraignment services. For the term of October one, twenty twenty-five through September thirty, twenty twenty-six. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two three zero two, approval to accept a grant award from the Michigan State Police Auto Theft Prevention Authority. ATPA in the amount of one million, eight hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars with a match of one million, one hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred twelve dollars. For the grant period of October first, twenty twenty-five through September thirty, twenty twenty-six for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash two three zero three, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Genesee Health Services. In the amount of four hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars for the purpose of providing police services, including two certified police sergeants. And one police deputy to serve GHS and respond to mental health crisis throughout Genesee County. The term of this agreement is October one, twenty twenty-five through September thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chair, um, is there anyone that could come and speak to, to this item? Uh, one question I have before I make a comment is, um, where will the staffing come from? I know if it, so I'll let you, you know, if you go ahead and answer that first.
Captain Kenimer, I won't forget that, from the Sheriff's Office. Uh, to answer your question is, the sergeants are already in place. Uh, this is an extension of a program that we currently have going on. Uh, they want to expand it and add a deputy. And based on the staffing needs, they're willing to wait until that deputies comes available.
Okay, so let's just, thank you for coming up. So, let's just, I just wanna be clear. So, this is four hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars plus. And it says, for the purpose of providing police services, including two certified police sergeants and one police deputy. You're suggesting that the deputy's already in place, so.
The sergeants are.
The sergeants are. For the purpose of providing police services, including two certified police sergeants. And one police deputy. So, they're already in place. How are they being paid? Cause we haven't approved this yet.
This is an extension of a, of a already existing grant.
So, the, the existing grant already employs them. This will allow the, the timing to extend further. So, what is the addition here? Is it the addition of the one police deputy?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, my next question is, so how are they utilized now? Are they, are these individuals, these two sergeants focused on other responsibilities? Or are they solely focused on this cause, this, um, response to the mental health crises?
They're assigned to GHS. Uh, they get dispatched to mental health, uh, calls throughout the county with a social worker with GHS. That's their partner. So, they work very diligently to try to come up with diversion plans when somebody is suffering through a mental health crisis. So, they'll be called out to scenes. Uh, we've used them in our jail. We've used them with our staff when they've gone through, um, mental health crisis. They'll come in, they'll talk to them. Uh, it's a great partnership with GHS. Um, and, uh. There's been countless numbers of times when they've gone onto a scene and they secure the scene and allow the social worker to. Address the mental health crisis, uh, to prevent them from either harming themselves, harming somebody else. And then divert them from having to go to jail. They go to other services.
How, how are they dispatched?
Through nine-one-one, uh, through referrals, through GHS, through the court system. If they have a pickup order. Uh, mental health pickup order, they'll be the ones that'll go out there with the social worker and, and facilitate those as well.
And then how are those calls prioritized? Do you have any insight on how those calls are prioritized?
Well, nine-one-one calls will be the top priority because they would be the emergent calls coming in. Uh, the pickup orders would be assigned by the judges. And then the walk-ins or referrals would come in directly after that. It's, it's gonna use the fire, the, the statement, it's the fire in front of you, uh, basically.
The reason why I wanted to hone in on this one is because out of, we all receive varying calls from, um, residents and stakeholders and community. And particularly in my district and Commissioner Winfrey and Commissioner Brown, who has portions of City Flint, maybe somebody else. When it comes to like, um, um, the need for public sa- safety assistance. The call that I've been receiving the most is, can you reach anybody to have officers sent to support a mental health crisis? And, um, really over the last probably month and a half, that's increased even more. And what I hear from, uh, varying callers, they call is, hey, I reached out to nine-one-one. And they don't have anybody available or it's been twenty-four hours, we haven't seen anybody and so on and so forth. And I'm not laying it at you guys' feet. That's why I wanted to understand how those calls are dispatched and if their sole responsibility is this effort. Because it's a, it's a major crisis. The other thing that I mentioned, um, what is the, who is the source of this grant?
Uh, GHS. It's a contract with GHS. They pay it to us.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Um, I appreciate the, the information, the clarifying information. Do you recall at the top of your head? How much the, um, previous allocation was? Cause I noticed a continuation. Do you know?
I do not know at the top of my head.
Alright, thank you.
I will tell you, Commissioner, really fast that when you talk to your, uh, residents that are asking those questions. GHS has hotlines to call as well. Uh, and if nine-one-one is not dispatching the people or the police agencies aren't able to, uh, respond accordingly. Call GHS as well. And you can also call the Sheriff's Office Dispatch as well.
Uh, one final question. Do you know if this is the only grant that we receive for this purpose? Can anybody answer that question? Is this, do you know, anybody know if this is the only grant that we receive for this purpose?
This is the only funding that we have for, for this, for the Sheriff's Office.
So, it's a, it's a major need beyond two certified police sergeants and one police deputy. At least, it appears that there's a. A need that may be even greater than this because of the variant and consistent calls that are coming in. Maybe it's specific to this time, maybe it's more broad across Genesee County. I don't know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kuzno.
You're fine. I, you, you, the main question I had is where the money came from, which is GHS off of that, to that particular mileage. But, uh, through the chair to Commissioner Lloyd, uh, a lot of your questions that you had or maybe, uh, could be answered tomorrow. When we have that meeting with, uh, nine-one-one, uh, as far as how they, uh. Triage or whatever it's called prioritize, where to send people and when, uh, and where. And, you know, with some of the, what I was gonna say, there's other answers. It's stuff that I've been working on for a long time on different things. But those questions, save those, uh, those are very good questions for the, the meeting that we're gonna have tomorrow.
I appreciate that. I'll do that. Thanks.
Do we have additional discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried. I have a little bit of other business, which isn't listed on here, but I wanna bring it to everyone's attention. That we did form a two hundred and fifty, America two fifty, um, commission to celebrate our country's birthday next summer. And one of the requirements in our own resolution was that each commissioner appoint, um. themselves, a member from their district who would sit on this, and I'm told that we only have one so far. So we need commissioners, um, I guess you can email this, so they can see, see it again. Um, we adopted this probably in May or June, I think. Um, so, each commissioner needs to think about who they want on this, and the, the chair, you also have some direct appointments, uh, which, when you see this, you'll, you'll know from what organizations. Um, and then the other piece is that the group's not started meeting, cause there's not enough people that have been recommended, and it is September, and summer is right around the corner. I like to think we're still in summer, but the next summer's around the corner. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, cause it's an important matter. I know we've been busy with other things, but if you would, um, please turn your attention to it. Get with Mr. Freeman. There? All right, thank you, um, we're gonna adjourn this meeting at seven-thirty-eight.
All right, we're gonna call the Human Services Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger?
Here.
Commissioner Kuzinov?
Here.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
At this time, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and supported, any comments, discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Heard any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Public comments are closed, no communications, no old business. New business, resolution twenty twenty-five, two-zero-seven-zero, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Hurley Medical Center, in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars, to provide histology services to the medical examiner's office. Term of this agreement is October one, twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty-six. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the following account.
So moved.
Support.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five, two-zero-seven-five, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and National Medical Services, NMS, in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars, one, one-hundred-and-eighty thousand of which is in county testing, and thirty-eight thousand of which is for out-of-county testing, to provide toxicology services at Genesee County's medical examiner's office. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
So moved.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five, two-zero-seven-nine, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and preferred removal service, services, in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, to provide body removal services to the medical examiner's office. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the following account.
Move it. Support.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five, two-one-nine-three, approval of a request to submit corrective action plan to the Department of Health and Human Services Administration for children's and families, in response to Focus Area Two Monitoring Review.
Move it.
Support.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Approval of a request, I'm sorry, resolution twenty twenty-five, two-two-zero-five, approval of a suicide prevention and lethal means safety display in the Genesee County Administration Building Lobby.
Move it.
Support.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I believe that Derek Britton is here and can explain to you all what that is, if you'd like to give him two minutes.
Colonel Britton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lieutenant Colonel Derek Britton, retired United States Air Force Director of Veteran Services. Um, so, we all know September Suicide Prevention Month, um, and awareness. Firearms, they're the most common, uh, method for suicides. The VA contacted us, asked us if we would, uh, be, uh, willing to put, uh, a display for, um, suicide awareness, just to talk about firearm safety and storage. Display is, uh, right here to your, uh, um, to my right, um, in, in addition to gun locks. Um, it was my thought that yes, we can do this in our area, you know, veterans, it's, um, suicide is probably, some statistics, statistics show that, um, it's, uh, veterans have a higher likelihood of committing suicide as opposed to the general public. Um, but, um, I thought it'd be a good idea to include this for the whole building. The gun locks are provided by the, uh, VA, they're, um, free to us, um, and we can get as many as, uh, we, as we need, they, they've let us know that, so, um, there you have it, it just has, uh, some literature, talks about, uh, safety, and the gun locks are free for the, uh, public to, uh, take, so, um, just thought I'd bring it to the, uh, board, to have it displayed in the, uh, building, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Britton, any, any discussion, any further discussion?
Oh, if I could, I just wanna thank two members in my, uh, department, Lauren Thompson and Tristan Shaw, um, who helped, uh, put this, uh, together.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution twenty-five, two-two-one-three, uh, approval of a request to submit the Child and Adult Care Food Program Proposal and authorize the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Move it.
Support.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five, two-two-five-zero, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and MTA, not to exceed a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to provide Genesee County's Vets to Wellness Program during FY twenty-six. The cost of this agreement will be paid from Veteran Services Milletage Funding, uh, in the following account.
Move it. Support.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, this time I'd like to move items eight through, well, I'd like to entertain a motion to remove, uh, move i- items eight through seventeen.
So moved. Support.
Any separations? Commissioner Kuzinov?
Yeah, no separation, but I just had a question. Is there a, um, beans a lot of these are the same amount, not all, there's different amounts, but yet, the same amount appear, uh, appears a number of times, uh, you know, how is that? Is there some type of formula that, uh, is followed to come up with the amount that these different school districts need?
Mrs. Coleman.
Pamela Coleman, Director for G Card again. Based on the number of students at the, um, at the schools, it's for breakfast, lunch, and snack.
Okay, the total population, or just the ones that are in the Head Start program?
The ones that are enrolled in our program.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, resolution two-zero-two-five, two-two-eight-five, approval of a request by Genesee County's Community Action Resource Department for a general fund appropriation in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars to provide for the administration of the twenty-five Water Affordability Twenty-Five Grant.
So moved.
Support.
Support with a question?
Properly moved and supported, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kuzinov?
Yeah, just an explanation.
Pamela Coleman, Director of G Card. Um, yes, sir, we came to you earlier this year with this grant, um, I believe it was in May. It runs from, um, March one, twenty twenty-five, and it extends out to September, twenty twenty-nine. When we were initially approached, um, from the state, or by the state, in regards to, we stated that we, um, would like, uh, a three-million-dollar appropriation. Once we received the actual language for the grant, we realized that the administrative, uh, allocation was only three percent. Um, we would only get three percent towards admin, and after speaking with our financial and, uh, analyst, it was determined that that would not be enough to fully expend, um, the grant out. We would need at least six percent, so, um, in an effort to not have the, uh, the grant award reduced, it was requested, actually during our, um, budget hearing, but because of G Card being so heavily, uh, grant-funded, and the uncertainty around, um, budget time, we kinda like, um, put that on pause. And moving forward with this, um, with the belief and hope that we will still be funded for FY twenty-six, we would like to still, um, administer the grant in its full award amount of three million, if possible. We had it, we requested to have it reduced to one-point-five, but the need is there. So if we could get the additional appropriation, um, to expend the full grant award amount.
Okay, so it hasn't been awarded yet, but you're preparing for that?
Well, the, the final approval, that's correct, because of the instability of federal funding, we're waiting. We've had it originally approved, but for FY twenty-six, it's in a holding pattern, because the state's not sure of the, uh, direction that the, um, federal funding is going to take.
So this may not be used, but, so this is just up to twenty-five, or seventy-five thousand?
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution twenty-five, two-three-zero-nine, approval of an amendment to an agreement between Genesee County and Genesee Health Plan, in an amount not to exceed two million dollars, for a revised total of seven million dollars, to provide healthcare services to uninsured Genesee County residents. This is a Milletage-funded agreement.
So moved.
Support.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion? Commissioner Kuzinov?
Just an explanation of why they need two more million dollars?
Yeah, you'll remember, um, a number of years ago, we were a reimbursement-based, um, contract with GHP, uh, GHS? GHP, there's too many acronyms, yeah. Genesee Health Plan. Uh, and at that time, they were trending a little bit lower because of incentives from the federal government. Um, and now with some of that transition or changes to it, they've got, uh, higher enrollment. So what they projected at the beginning of the year, they're actually having a higher enrollment and spending more than, um, what they had projected, so, um, this changes their contract, I believe, yeah, from the five million, uh, to seven million dollars. And it's all, it's all driven by enrollment. Yeah, it's all driven by enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it, motion carries, and this meeting stands adjourned.
Just, just one other thing. Um, annually, this board makes payments to the three hospitals for, um, uncompensated care. We need to do that before the end of the fiscal year, we typically wait to the end till we get that number. Um, because this is the last committee meeting for the year, we just met with the hospitals, um, about this, but also something else. You'll see a resolution next week, I guess is what I'm getting at, for a three-million-dollar payment. Yep, three-million-dollar payment, rather than going through.
One million to each hospital?
Uh, they split it up by the percentage of uncompensated care by the hospitals. They've come together, they say this is our total, yep, and then each share goes to each hospital.
Okay, now we stand adjourned.
Call Public Works Committee to order at seven-fifty-one, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flewelly?
Present.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Motion for approval of minutes from September third?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any public comment to the committee? Any public comment to the committee? Any public con- comment? Public comments closed. Communications? See none? Old business? New business, resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-two fourteen, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and OnBase, in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-ninety-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars, ninety-four cents, to provide document, imaging, and workflow for various county departments. The term of this agreement is October first, twenty twenty-five, through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker?
Can we have an explanation on what this is a little more? You know, we've done a lot of document storage and other stuff, it's just another large number.
Great warning from IT sitting for Mike. Uh, so this is, uh, the majority of use is from the courts, and, uh, they use this for automation purposes, for judge signing, whatever, uh, filings, uh, with TCS, with JIS, and possibly we have, uh, M-file coming in the future, uh, which will work into this as well.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Didn't, didn't we approve something for them, cause I remember questioning it.
I know we approved something for the prosecutors.
I thought we did something for the court last year.
That would be a nice system, probably, is the latest one, prosecutors.
If I can just jump in too, this is also used by friend of the court. So friend of the court is totally paperless, and they are paperless because of the system. And then, like, our office uses it for storage of our, um, uh, historical documents, so.
Right, not only is it a document storage, but it has a workflow as well, um, FOC has forty-one automated workflows that they use.
Okay, just, just a question, is this scanning the documents in and storing them too? Or is this just to store the documents for a year?
Um, it's, it's not only stores of documents, but it's the workflow of documents, it's signatures, a lot of signatures that have proven along the way, uh, in the past, ten, twelve years ago, you used to have runners that ran between the different buildings to get signatures, this takes all that out of the way. I believe, uh, they all, there was also two clerks per judge previously, where there's only one clerk now that does, because of this automated processing.
So, so, if I may, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So you're doing electronic signatures through this process on paperwork? You're storing documents through this? And, that's pretty much it? So, e-workflow, let's call it. Okay.
That's, that's a basis.
And I, and I know that term, cause, you mean, everyone knows, I, I sell software to car dealerships. We store all those documents, you know? If you, a average car deal, if I was to roll out a piece of paper in here, would be over thirty-some feet long in paperwork. So I know about document storage, and I don't charge anything where near this for something like that, and every car deal has over fifty-some pieces of paper in it. And I have some dealers that sell over five-hundred cars a month, and then they have their service stuff. So I'm, I'm questioning the cost of this, this just seems like a large amount, and what I'm scared of is, not that you guys didn't do your work looking into what it should cost, but the fact is, they see government and they charge you triple what it should be. Because this is, this is, this is just one, just one year of service then.
Correct.
Obviously, you're able to access this, people have limited access to this, certain people, there's restraints on it also.
Um, and so this is part of, uh, so for instance, TCS, they've got an online version of OnBase, you know, this is directed. We've been, we've been working on just that fact, this is a lot of money, is it worth it? And we're trying to do our due diligence to find out, is there something else? But in, in the process so far, the lift of taking OnBase away and going to something else is, the cure is worse than, than the disease, if you will. We are going to be looking at over this next year, uh, to see if there's anything else we can go to. Uh, we've been getting some pushback from some of the, uh, state of Michigan ends of this. Like I said, they, they, excuse me, this goes into JIS, uh, TCS, it goes in M-file possibly down the road. So, uh, some of this is, they program their ends that we hook into from OnBase itself.
So this, this is, if I'm looking at this, just to be clear, this is not storage from what I'm reading here, it's just imaging and e-workflow for the departments?
Uh, it's storage as well, so, um, in, in the move to the tower, a lot of departments scanned in all their, their documents, so it would be electronic, so we wouldn't have to have rooms of storage here. So it, it does all, all of those things.
And I'm sure we sent it out for bid.
I can't comment to that.
Derek Jones, Purchasing Administrator. Uh, yeah, this was done a while ago, in terms of the, uh, skating, transitioning into this, um, this particular system. Um, and so these are just your, your annual costs in terms of maintaining it. So, and I see you looking at me.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, no, it's not, it's not you, no, you don't, I'm, I'm good. I just can't believe, when seeing what is charged elsewhere in the private sector to store documents, to do e-workflow, and to do all this other stuff, and signatures and everything else like that, comparably to what we're paying here. I'm just, I just goes back to the thing, you know, that. It's a government project, it's gotta be funded by the government, and you're gonna pay more for it, because it's just, this is, for someone who sits there, and I, that's what, I, I mean, I actually have some really cool tech, and there's no way we charge anywhere near this, and that's why I'm just, at all, and I'm, I'm gonna be a no on it, cause I just can't believe the amount of it. It's, it's fleecing, I think, of the taxpayer at this point. So, I'm, I, I appreciate it, appreciate the work, and I appreciate what you're trying to do, cause e-workflow is so important, cause it, it is so much more efficient. Instead of going to fish a document out, the time and energy it saves, but this is, this is a lot of money. You could have, you could have two staffers just walk around and take paperwork and get signatures and file them, so, thank you, though. I, I appreciate what you're trying to do.
Not, and not a problem, but just so you understand, if this doesn't go through, then it will turn into going by hand, and I don't know if that is a possibility going forward.
See, I, I love comments like that. If I may, I'm sorry, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, because here, here's the problem. We are held hostage basically then to these companies with taxpayer dollars. When, when we do this, and we don't prepare, and we aren't prepared for option A or option B, and unfortunately, evidently, this was a while ago sent out, but there's, you know, I wish I could write software code. That's what I'm wishing right now.
Sure. And, and I'm not disagreeing with you, by the way. I, I, I think we should investigate this, but it, you know, we, we need to go over the next year and do this, not, not right now, because this doesn't go forward, you know, we're, we're holding the rest of the county hostage, if you will. So, you know, this, this is something on my plate to personally go through and look for the next year to figure out if we can get out of this. Uh, if we can't, um, you know, that would be a decision as well.
Well, most of, most of our contracts, we're very blessed, our Corporation Council has put in a way for us to get out of them. Right, Ben?
Yes.
Yep, there we go.
Any further discussion? Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in reading the invoice or, uh, quote here, it looks like thirty-two thousand, over thirty-two thousand dollars is for customer care, the customer care package itself.
Sure.
So that's a, a big chunk of, of this money. Can you talk to the, uh, level of customer care that we receive from this company?
Customer care is, uh, when, I, I've got, uh, two application specialists that when they need help, they can call in, have somebody come in and fix some, uh, somebody from this group fix something for them, walk them through something. If we have, uh, an issue, uh, somebody can't, or some of the workflow's not working, or, or their system looks down, or whatever, they call into this. They work through it, uh, and they resolve that issue. Uh, as also part of the customer care, uh, we have worked through cleaning up backend. Some of it falls under customer care, some of it falls under a different SOW, to clean up the backend, to make sure that we're running, we're doing the right business processes, uh, and that sort of thing.
And are they responsive, pretty responsive?
Yeah, it's, they're, they're responsive. Uh, we, we call their support line, they get somebody running, we get assigned a technician right at that, at that spot.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. One, one question for you, cause I don't remember hearing you say it. So, is this a multi-year contract with this company?
Um, it's an ongoing contract. I think we're just adding on year by year after the contract is resolved, so.
So we're doing extensions year by year?
Extension year to year.
So you will have something for bid next year?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five two two five seven. Approval of a purchase order to Bunzl Distribution for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-six in an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars to provide janitorial supplies at various Genesee County buildings. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed.
So moved.
Support with a question? Um, I remember in the Finance Committee, we approved a hundred thousand dollars for the same company to provide janitorial supplies for the jail, I believe. So is there a reason why they're under different categories?
Yeah, this is for, so the jail is jail-specific? This is for all other county buildings through our, um, facilities and operations?
So my question is, are we getting some kind of economies of scale for?
That's a purchasing question, but I sure hope so.
Derek Jones?
Yes, due to the fact that we do a multiple year, um, that one's up for this year. Uh, so it'll be rebidded again, um, for the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution twenty twenty-five two two five eight. Approval of a purchase order to various vendors for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-six in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars to provide for the purchase of tires at Genesee County's motor pool. Cost for this purchase will be paid from accounts listed. Move? Support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? I do have one. Would this be a Ray question?
Yep.
Ray?
Good evening. Ray Zinkin, Facilities Director.
So... Approximate number, I mean, what are we looking at? How many tires? What, is it just to, to restock what you keep every year?
Yep, it's just wear and tear, maintenance, you know, flats.
All right. Do you have, not necessarily regarding this motion, but do you have a spreadsheet of some type, an inventory of every county vehicle that we own?
Yes, there's a master county vehicle list.
Can you provide that to me?
Sure.
Excellent, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? No other business? We adjourn to eight oh four.